Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, April the 2nd, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, March 19th, 2018. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have four pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $94,376.71. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
If there's no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated April the 2nd, 2018, in the amount of $94,376.71.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene Board of Public Works and Safety within five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, April the 2nd, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, March 19th, 2018. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
There is no questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have thirty pages of corporate claims in the amount of $1,326,581. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated April the 2nd, 2018, in the amount of $1,326,581.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Board. Under unfinished business from the previous meeting, we have one item tonight, and that is the 2018 Sanitary Sewer Quote Award. Brent from Westler. Brent, could you advise us, please?
Yes, Westler reviewed the quotes that were received, and we've prepared a quote evaluation letter. I'll read portions of that. On behalf of the City of Beach Grove, quotes for the 2018 Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project were received at 4:00 PM on March 19th, 2018. Let's see, each of the sealed quotes was opened and read aloud at the Board of Sanitation, Board of Public Works and Safety meeting on March 19th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Three quotes were received. The contractors' respective quote amounts are as follows. Miller Pipeline, $68,739.20. And Sitiform USA, $72,835.40. And Lane Inliner LLC at $115,262. The engineer's estimate for this project was $81,178. Westler Engineering has worked with Miller Pipeline in the past on cured and placed pipe projects, and they have performed satisfactorily. Miller Pipeline has also worked successfully on prior sewer rehab projects for the City of Beach Grove. Pursuant to the contract documents, the Board may reject any and all quotes, or accept any quote as may be the lowest responsive and responsible contractor, which we feel Miller Pipeline is. Be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding our evaluation of the quotes. And also, after that, request the Board decide whether or not they'd like to act upon issuing a notice of award to Miller Pipeline.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the engineer's recommendation of Miller Pipeline.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we can also issue a notice of award to Miller Pipeline. Any questions or comments?
No.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the notice of award to Miller Pipeline.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Next steps will be to get the agreement, the bonds, insurance in place, and present that at the next Board of Works meeting, along with hopefully the notice to proceed.
I don't know if we else have to sign. Looks like just you. Okay. Is one of these ours, Brent?
Yes, yes. I want two signed back, one for the contractor, one for us.
Thank you, thank you. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, we have several items tonight. The first item is 2018 Phase One Stormwater Quote Opening. And at this time, we will, I will ask Board Member Sandy Seward to open the quotes, please, and read aloud.
There are three quotes. The first is from Eagle Valley. And the second sealed bid from Global Asphalt Paving. And the last sealed bid from JKES Incorporated, doing business of Smith Projects. And their quote is $140,144. And that is it on the sealed bid.
I take cream in my coffee. I'm teasing you. We did not receive a quote, and we invited Russell Escavating to quote, and they did not present a quote, so. Brent, any comments?
We'll take the bids on a review.
For our next meeting?
Works meeting, yes.
All right.
What was the engineer's estimate?
Emily, what was the engineer's estimate? We're getting, next order of business is Little League Parade Approval. The Little League opening day is April the 21st. They want to have a parade again, beginning at nine o'clock in the park, like they've done in years past. I've asked them to, twice now, to present a letter and a copy of insurance, naming us as additionally insured. I haven't seen it yet, so I don't want to be, I don't want the Board to be the reason they don't have a parade. So I'll open it up for any comments the Board may have. I talked to Curtis before Easter again, and they haven't brought it forward.
We got to approve it pending they get their paperwork to us?
Yeah, that'd be my go.
Okay. Motion to approve, pending approval of the Little League Parade, provided they submit a letter of request and a certificate of insurance.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is outdoor seating request, Victory Rolls and Bakery. I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record. Here, Board, when the weather allows, I would like to ask permission to place tables and chairs on the sidewalk in front of Victory Rolls and Bakery Goods located at 702 Main Street. I will be sure to leave room for pedestrian traffic, allowing room enough for dog walkers and families with strollers. I am happy to provide proof of insurance upon approval if you need further information. Sincerely, Amy Norcross. Any questions or comments from Board members?
I do have one comment. She said she'd be happy to provide proof of insurance. She also has to name the city as additional insured. So she may not know that, but just make sure we spell that out to her.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other comments from Board members? If not, I ask for a motion to approve.
Is there that much room?
Yeah.
Is there a lot? I was trying to think of what that sidewalk was. Okay.
I'll make said motion, Dennis.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next order of business is a Master Vendor's License Application for the Greater Beach Grove Chamber. And Chief, you had a chance to review this. You got your signatures on it?
I thought that was for the promoters. That was the...
This is from the Greater Beach Grove Chamber of Commerce, 409 Main Street. And they want to have music on Main August 4th. And we'll get to that in the next order of business, but this one is just to approve the license application for Master Vendor.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next order of business is request to hold music on Main Street.
Good evening. Jim Kaufman, current president of the Greater Beach Grove Chamber of Commerce. Looking to have music on Main, music event again this year. Took last year off. We lost our executive director. So it was just hard for us to get the whole event together. So did not happen last year, so looking to have our third event this year in August, August 4th, looking to have it on a Saturday this year. Hoping to open up more to the businesses who are open on Saturdays in there on Main Street, being all-day event, two to nine. We're asking the road be closed earlier than that, and then actually about an hour or two after that event. Two stages, one at Eighth, and then again one at Fifth. And between Fifth and Sixth, probably be a secondary stage. Vendors, food, food trucks. There'd be places to drink and places to listen to music and have fun, hang out, and visit the local businesses here on Main Street. So the band applications are due here in the next couple of days, so we don't have any bands set or confirmed yet. We're kind of waiting to make sure that we were able to and allowed on the city's end. So, yeah, any questions for me?
I have none, thank you.
Jim, I just got one. Any of the food trucks will fall under you guys' license, so they do not have to be permitted as long as you approve of them.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request from the Greater Beach Grove Chamber of Commerce to hold music on Main Street August the 4th, 2018, from 2:00 PM until 9:00 PM, and which would require Main Street to be closed from Fifth to Ninth from approximately 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
All right, thank you, guys. I appreciate it very much. We'll be sure to send out letters to the Main Street businesses, let them know a little time before that they won't have any parking that day. But should be good, good event for everybody, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Chief.
We have several amusement license renewals for this evening. I'll defer to the clerk to read them into the record. Dan?
Okay. The first one is Lucky's Pub. Next one is Moose Lodge. The other one, another one, is American Legion, and then Night Owls.
Floor is open for any questions or comments. These have all been reviewed by the police chief, and he recommends approval as well.
These are renewals, they're not new ones? Is that right?
No, these are done on an annual basis.
Renewal.
And each time, the chief checks them out, and if they've had any issue, then it's at his discretion as to whether or not they're approved or not.
I'll make said motion to approve the licenses.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. And the last item for reimbursement or for consideration this evening is reimbursement on a sewer claim. The other day, I ran into this lady at the grocery store and had a little conversation with her, just asked her how she was doing, and she was doing fine. She's 91 years old. And she was telling me that she had to call a plumber because her toilets and sink and all that, everything came out from the sewer. So I said, well, do you have any idea what caused it? She said, yeah. She lives at Third and Albany, and they were working, the line, the main, had backed up. And so I, she said, when they flushed it, this is when it happened. So I asked Phil about it, or Phil and Brad, and they had a blockage down there, and our jet machine couldn't, couldn't clear the main. So they had to call in Commercial Sewer, and they come in there and they, whatever they do, pressured it or whatever, but when they did that, it came up in her house. So I said, well, I said, how much did it cost you to have them come out? She said it was $69. I said, well, I'll tell you what, why don't you, if you can submit a copy that you paid it, we'll let the Board consider what they want to pay this or not. And it says that upon arrival, this is Cirillo's report, upon arrival, flushed toilets and ran every faucet, but could not get anything to back up or gurgle. Went into the crawl space and found no leaks on any drain or water piping. Sounds like the city sewer backed up or was being jet cleaned when the problem occurred. So I'll leave it up to the...
Were there any other residents that were affected?
Not that I'm, not that has come forward.
If what we did caused it, I'd say we'd need to pay it.
I think that when we, we didn't cause the blockage. I don't know what caused it, but when we pressured it, or when we pressured it out, that probably is what happened here. So my personal opinion, I would like to see reimbursement to her.
Okay, so let me just throw this out here. If there are other residents that are going to come forward with their invoices, are we going to pay them as well?
It would be a case-by-case basis, but I would say yes.
I make a motion that we pay the $69.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Thank you. That concludes new business. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:26 PM. We will convene again on Monday, April the 16th, at 6:00 PM. The City Council is tonight at 7:00 PM. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will begin our common council meeting for Monday, April the 2nd, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brooks, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Counselor Lamping is sick, and Counselor Maschary had a funeral, so they won't be with us this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Beginning special presentations, the first is National Day of Service Proclamation, April the 3rd, 2018. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April the 3rd, 2018. Therefore, being resolved that I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Next up, acknowledgement of Jack Olery, Beach Grove High School's school swim record. On behalf of the City of Beach Grove, we want to congratulate you on breaking a 32-year-old record in the 500 freestyle, a record that had been, was set in 1986 by Andy McVeigh. Anybody remember Randy McVeigh?
Yeah.
Jack broke the record. So Jack, on behalf of the City of Beach Grove, congratulations.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jack's parents are back in the back.
Uh-huh. I seen him come in.
Thank you.
Well done.
Andy McVeigh is looking for you, though.
But don't worry, he lives in Denmark.
That's true.
Next up is Bailey Moore. Bailey is a senior at Beach Grove High School, and he was a state qualifier in weight class 138 pounds. So on behalf of the City of Beach Grove, this is quite an accomplishment when you reach the state final in any sport, especially in the sport of wrestling. Such a great sport. So congratulations to Bailey Moore, 2018 State Wrestling Qualifier, 138-pound weight class. Bailey? He doesn't want to say anything. All right. Well done. And Ethan is not here, but I do want to point out, congratulations to Ethan Smiley, our 2018 State Wrestling Qualifier, 126-pound weight class. I know only one other wrestler in Beach Grove that has ever did what Ethan did. He qualified for the state four years in a row. I think Stephen Bradley did it back in the time, but this is really quite an accomplishment, and he needs to be publicly recognized. So on behalf of the City of Beach Grove, we congratulate Ethan Smiley for his state qualifier four years in a row this year in the 126-pound weight class. We'll make sure he gets that.
Now, do the boys have any plans after graduation?
My swimming career is done. I plan on wrestling in college and probably going to Marion.
Ah. He'll wrestle, if he wrestles at Marion, he'll wrestle for Stephen Bradley.
Right.
You don't have to stick around, but congratulations. Committee reports. I have the public safety report. I didn't hear from ABC. The Greenscape Commission, you folks should have, did not get a report from compliance yet. A financial report. Dan?
Good evening, councilors. In March, we made the following payments, DPW and parked vehicle lease purchase payments, We closed out the health trust, and the check from Donley was mailed to AIM and put toward the April payment. The rainy day fund was paid in full last year. The stormwater fund, AS331, 2018, had a bounce of $265,824.62. The website continues to be a success, thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beachgrove.com. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan@... Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beachgrove.com. The corporation balance as of Friday was two million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and sixty-one cents. The utilities had nine hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you, respectfully submitted Dan McMillan, clerk treasurer, city of Beach Grove.
Chris?
Uh, how much did we get from the trust and put into the AIM payment?
Um, we got almost twenty-one thousand back from Donley, uh, to close out the health trust. And we had already reimbursed the rainy day fund for whatever we had borrowed from it. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but we came out with a, uh, plus twenty-one, almost twenty-one thousand dollars. And so, we're over and done, provided there isn't a bill out there that's a year and a half old. Uh, but we haven't paid anything out of the trust for several months.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a good, that's a good deal. It's, uh, for those that didn't know, we used to be self-insured, and that trust was the money that was set aside to pay claims with. And being self-insured, you saved some money usu- usually, but a lot of times you were just one big claim away from being broke. And so, that's one more thing that, that Dan and the administration have, have done to, to make your city more solvent. So, I'm, again, I'm proud of them.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Any other questions for the clerk? Uh, if not, we'll move to, uh, the reading of the minutes and approval. Uh, you have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, March the fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Public comments, councillor?
Jim Kaufman. Good evening, uh, Jim Kaufman, three-three-two Timber Grove Way. Um, I'm the current president of the Greater Beach Grove Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to give a, a brief summary on what's going on there. Um, we recently had our third annual community fair sponsored by Franciscan Health. That was last month at the Beach Grove Middle School. That went very well. Uh, thank you to all of our sponsors, the vendors, and anybody who came out for that event. Uh, it was a, a free event for the city. Um, there was free shredding by All Shred, free recycling by Hannah's, um, and it was very well attended. So, we appreciate them, appreciate the schools for letting us have the event there. Um, again, and also to the Robotics Club, um, they did a great job and, uh, very entertaining group of kids there. So, we, we enjoy having them out as well. Um, our golf outing, it'll be our eleventh golf outing, um, that is scheduled for June twenty-second at Sarah Schenk. Um, music on main event that will return this year for the third year. Uh, last year, we did not have one, um, but we are on schedule for this year, and it was approved this evening. Um, that is August fourth, that's a Saturday, it'll run from two to nine. Um, and we'll have two stages, food trucks, vendors, um, free fun for the whole family. So, um, band applications are due soon, so we'll announce the, uh, the bands and the entertainment soon. So, we're excited for that event. Um, four new members that have joined the chamber in the last month or so. Um, those members are Stacked Pickle on Southport Road, uh, Victory Girls and Baked Goods on Main Street. Um, they opened up earlier this year. If you haven't been there, please stop by, it's a great addition to our Main Street. Um, Horizon Bank out of Franklin, they joined, and then Harvey's Tavern on Main Street. Harvey's recently, uh, just underwent new ownership. It is now a smoke-free facility, um, with a, a new expanded menu and, um, just a totally different atmosphere. So, we're excited for them, so. Um, and again, one last thing is we're, uh, exciting announcement and introduction of our new executive director will be this week. Uh, we did hi- offer the position to, um, a young lady, uh, last week, and we were excited for her to start. So, uh, we will, uh, not make that announcement in the next week or so, and she'll be at our monthly luncheon next week at the community center. Um, there we have, uh, Beach Grove's own Mike Chapel will be our speaker for the day. So, um, if you guys can come, please feel free to attend. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone, uh, anyone else, Graham? All right, thank you. Uh, we'll go into unfinished business carried over from the last meeting. General ordinance number one, two thousand and eighteen is up for approval on third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to, uh, read the ordinance, uh, into the record on third reading, Dan.
General ordinance number one, two thousand and eighteen is an ordinance that amends chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to stormwater fees established for the city of Beach Grove. Whereas the city of Beach Grove established stormwater fees on August first, two thousand and fourteen, and issued step increases that continue through two thousand and eighteen. And whereas the common council mandated that funds collected be used to correct drainage problems and other tasks associated with drainage and stormwater matters without the issuance of debt. And whereas residents are now witnessing drainage corrections in our city, and these fees ensure that future drainage corrections will continue to be made. And whereas our DPW director is mandated to file an annual report, MS four, on our diligence towards addressing drainage matters with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to cap the fees collected pursuant to our stormwater utility. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires that the following amendment be inserted in chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Delete in its entirety section fifty point two oh two stormwater user fees. A calculation of stormwater user fee, the fee per one equivalent residential user, E.R.U. Number one, effective August first, two thousand and fourteen, one dollar and fifty cents. Number two, effective January first, two thousand and sixteen, two dollars, twenty-five cents. Number three, effective January first, two thousand and eighteen, excuse me, January first, two thousand and seventeen, three dollars. Number four, effective January first, two thousand and eighteen, three dollars and seventy-five cents. Replace with the following, section fifty point two oh two stormwater user fees. A calculation of stormwater fees, the fee per one equivalent residential user, E.R.U., shall be three dollars and seventy-five cents. Therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to cap the fee charged pursuant to the collection of stormwater fees. Therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to chapter fifty of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove and no other chapter. Therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Um, motion to approve general ordinance number one, two thousand and eighteen on third reading.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Thank you. For the general public, uh, currently, you, uh, you pay three dollars and seventy-five cents on your sewer bill per E.R.U. Uh, now that's permanently capped, and the only change that could be made would, would be through the, uh, common council. So, uh, I appreciate the legislation. General ordinance number two, two thousand and eighteen is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I will ask, uh, for motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
Second.
I'll, we'll vote beginning on my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll ask, uh, the clerk to read general ordinance number two, two thousand and eighteen into the record by title only.
General ordinance number two, two thousand and eighteen is an ordinance that amends chapter one hundred of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove pursuant to local road and sidewalk improvements.
Thank you. General ordinance number two, two thousand and eighteen is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote.
Thank you, sir.
General ordinance number three, two thousand and eighteen is up for approval on second reading only this evening. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General ordinance number three, two thousand and eighteen is an ordinance that amends chapter thirty-five of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove pursuant to the Board of Public Works and Safety functioning as a purchasing agency. Whereas the Board of Public Works and Safety serves as a purchasing agency for the city of Beach Grove. And whereas from time to time, department heads make purchases that require at least two separate quotes. And whereas rules are established in the Indiana Code concerning the requirements for quotes and for public bidding. And whereas within the last five years, the amount required for quotes was lowered from twenty-five thousand to ten thousand, which could cause undue delays in much-needed purchases. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend chapter thirty-five of the Code of Ordinances concerning the amount designated for purchases before quotes have to be secured. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following change be made in chapter thirty-five, section thirty-five point one eight one of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Section thirty-five point one eight one, powers and duties, subsection A, line two, delete ten thousand dollars. Replace with the following, twenty-five thousand dollars. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend chapter thirty-five of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to chapter thirty-five of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beach Grove and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect thirty days after passage by the common council, attested by the council president, pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. General ordinance number three, two thousand and eighteen is up for approval on second reading only. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion for approval for second reading on general ordinance number three.
I'll second.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Was there two ayes?
Two ayes?
Okay.
Mathematically, it's, uh...
Councillor, how, how do we do with that? Is it, did it fail?
It failed because of...
Okay. So, it failed, this failed. General ordinance number three failed. Okay.
How did it fail?
Only three votes.
You have to have four.
Yep, you have to have four.
Even if you don't have seven?
Correct. Um, could I ask how this can be brought back up again? Is there any time limit, uh?
I believe so, you can bring it up in another, in other ordinance, but...
Okay. Does anything have to be different from the ordinance that failed? It'd just be brought up exactly as it, as it was if...
You gotta start over.
Right. Back to first reading and so forth.
Correct.
Okay.
General ordinance number four, two thousand and eighteen is up for approval on second reading only this evening. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read, or, excuse me, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make a motion to read by title only?
I'll second.
We'll vote beginning on my left.
Title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only?
Title only.
At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record by title only, please.
General ordinance number four, two thousand and eighteen is an ordinance that amends general ordinance number eight, two thousand and seventeen, salary ordinance for two thousand and eighteen, which was passed by the common council during the budget presentations last fall.
General ordinance number four, two thousand and eighteen is up for approval on second reading only. This time, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, at least talk about a possible, uh, amendment to this ordinance, and maybe the clerk's help. There is a, an issue that involves, uh, a replacement or other items within the police contract. I, and it is possible, the clerk, if I'm right, uh, in addition to this would make you feel better about, uh...
Without question. I can issue a check for payment for tomorrow. Um, the issue is, is they get nine hundred dollars a year in uniform allowance. This, the way I interpret it, would make it more than the nine hundred dollars. So, um, in order to relieve any, uh, possibility is the fact that also would have to state is what was negotiated in their union contract over and above the nine hundred dollars.
And, okay, and by putting that in there, which has already been, uh, or, union contract's already been approved anyway, um, does it, would we state, uh, any contract, or...
Well, I think there's only certain individuals, there's five or six individuals that sort of...
Well, I wasn't referring just to the police. I don't know if there's any, uh, as far as any contract, even if the fire or so forth, it might involve something similar in the future. But, uh, that was the only thing, just get it over with. I, I do want to say, first of all, I, I don't personally believe that this is a salary ordinance issue. But if it will be put in there to, uh, to help clarification, then I'm, I'm all for it, so. So, can you break it down what it says?
Yeah, what, I mean, what, what's going on that you need to change this?
Uh, as the clerk just stated a moment ago, there's, uh, based on the police contract, um, there is some uniforms, uh, I'm gonna stick away from equipment because that's usually not in question. Uh, in many cases, these are replacement items. I'm gonna call them that, for lack of a better word, when it comes to shirts or so forth. And in the, uh, the clerk doesn't feel comfortable in paying these items. They're not paid personally. They are invoiced from, giving example in this case, from like Jenkins uniforms. The money, uh, it's a invoice sent, Jenkins will be the one to get the money. Um, but in lieu of saying, hey, there's a, an extra shirt thrown in there, or extra, whatever uniform might be extra, um, the clerk's concern is, is that it might and could exceed, since they're already paid, uh, cash for their uniforms. That money's already due out, so they're already at the nine hundred, then anything additional would, would go over the salary ordinance. Is that how you look at it?
Right.
And again, I'm just stating that I, I don't maybe see it the same way as the clerk does in this case. But if, I don't think it hurts to put it in there, because all we're doing is mirroring basically something that's already been approved, referring to the contract. So, the short answer is, is just to add into the salary ordinance that payment on, uh, items that are already been approved in the, uh, contract would be okay. Wasn't the contract approved after the salary ordinance? I believe it was.
Before?
Before, excuse me, that was one of the questions, the future. How can the salary ordinance then not conform to what the contract says? I think that's a question for the clerk.
I didn't do the salary ordinance, and I didn't do the negotiating of the union contract. So, um, the, the simple fixa is, is just to add in there that, uh, anything else that the, uh, union contract calls for over and above the salary ordinance. Because what it amounted to, that invoice approximately a hundred and forty dollars, and it would throw that nine hundred up to a thousand forty, approximately.
And what does the contract say, Mayor, as far as, 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 uh, how much there could be reimbursed for uniforms?
Uh, this year, it's four hundred, or...
Four fifty.
Nine hundred for the year.
Nine hundred this year. Uh, next year's a thousand?
Yes.
Yeah. And I want to ask, answer your question. Why was it in there? Because it's not a salary issue.
If, if the firemen and the policemen, and I know because I used to be the clerk treasurer, although at that time it was, I think, four hundred dollars, they're paid that twice a year in the form of a, a check to them.
When you were clerk treasurer, did you tax that check?
I don't think we did.
No, because it's not a salary issue, but I'm not gonna argue. Jim, you did thirty years on the fire department, did you, was your clothing allowance ever taxed?
No.
No. But I, for the sake of not arguing...
Right, but I, but it's a separate check, so it's a non-tax check. But I don't, we're not, that's not at issue. I think what's at issue is, is if the cap is nine hundred dollars per person, why would that individual not have paid that invoice himself, since he's getting the money directly?
It depends on the clothing.
And not have it invoiced to the city?
It depends on the clothing, clothing. Uh, tonight, a fireman could go out and destroy his gear, that's two or three thousand dollars.
That's gear. That's not a, that's not a uniform.
Well, this is a special uniform.
It could be the same way, uh, bloodborne pathogens on uniforms, or I can, uh...
But that's why we give the firemen and the policemen an allowance for those things, is it not?
Well...
They don't give me an allowance at work for my...
Well, I don't get one either, and I work the same place you do, but...
Right.
The point is, is that, um, this is a decision that's already been made anyway. It's in their contract. The problem is, is trying to, uh, go along with that contract that's been approved.
But what we're adhering to the contract, buddy, if the, if the...
The contract doesn't state anything. I, I don't know if it states anything. Well, I'm sure it does as far as clothing.
I think the contract, in my opinion, is over and above the uniform allowance.
I don't, I don't know how anybody could, could ask. We, we have these people do a job for us, whether it be the police department, or the fire department, or whoever. They go out and they, they do their job at the risk of destroying everything they're wearing, for us to turn around and tell them, you're gonna, you're on your own to get this. I think that's unfair. You cannot ask a fireman to go out and replace his gear, his helmet, and his boots, and his gloves, and his hood, and his face piece. Uh, he could do it tonight, and he, and, and he can turn around the next shift to destroy it again.
You're talking apples and oranges, Mayor.
No, I'm talking about uniforms.
We're not talking about turnout gear, masks, coats, boots.
We're, we're talking about uniforms that he or she is required to wear.
Just a uniform, though, not his turnout gear.
I don't look at this as a personal item anyway. It's an, it, it is a, there's a reason. The chief has to stand by those reasons of why this replacement or uniform, basically in a Class A-type situation. But I should like to say that this is also within their budget category. No one's giving additional monies, uh, there's no transfer of monies. I think it comes out of equipment, and, uh, I mean, right now, the police chief could go out and buy a thousand dollars' worth of balloons, and we wouldn't have anything to do with it, but yet to go out and buy a uniform. It's, it's a matter that they're taking out of, within their own budget they've been allotted. Down the road, if, I don't believe it's ever going to be a huge money issue, but down the road, if it does exceed it, then it comes to the council, and, uh, but, you know, there are...
Let me understand then, buddy. If you're giving them nine hundred dollars a year, or uniforms...
Right.
Do they have to turn in receipts to show they bought uniforms?
No. This isn't a quarter master, of course. Yeah.
At what point do we say, you didn't buy any uniforms with that money? Why are you turning in receipts to the city to be paid more?
Well, first of all, you're, uh, the, Nathan...
I can speak by your chance, buddy.
I, yes, if you wish to come up and speak, yes.
I think I can help Chris a little bit.
Yeah, I think, didn't the police chief, you might have addressed your question while I was...
I don't know, but...
So, yeah, Chris, so what we did during the negotiation, yeah, we have our uniform allowance that we've gotten for years, same way you paid it out. There were some items that was negotiated in the fire contract that they deemed was like their base equipment. And so they put a list of base equipment, which include, I believe, their, what's considered their Class A uniform, right? Their dress, uniform, and a few other items, I can't remember everything, that was in there. So they negotiated that, they put this list in there, they said, and it, the wording, I'd have to read it to you, basically, you get your clothing allowance, in addition, the city, at no cost to that fireman, the city agrees that these items shall be replaced if they are deemed, uh, needing to be replaced.
Those items are enumerated in the contract?
Yes, sir. So during the negotiation, the mayor and I talked, and our, our bargaining team talked, and he said, what would be similar to that? And so what we came up with was our basic Class A uniform. At the start of everyone's career, they get a Class A uniform issued to them. That's amount of dress shirts, long sleeve, short sleeve, the, the shiny belt like the ma, the chief is wearing, uh, Class A, dress shoes, hat, um, the, the gun holster, that whole list. So we have that list that was in our, um, handbook for new hires, itemized out. And so as we were negotiating, we said, well, if you're trying to make similar language, similar, uh, benefit for fire and police, I said, this would be similar. Now, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a benefit that's really, does a lot for most of our officers. There's only like six guys, I think, like you said, there's about six guys that wear that uniform on a regular basis, and it's pretty durable. So it's not anything, this isn't something where we're gonna be replacing the Class A uniform every year. It, it, it just gives a mechanism, someone's wearing that Class A uniform, the holster gets damaged. Or if I were wearing the Class A uniform every day, and my shirt got ripped in a foot pursuit, or I was jumping over a fence tomorrow, it would be replaced. It's just that uniform. This uniform I wear every day, I have to pay for that with my uniform allowance, which is about a hundred and thirty dollars for this shirt and this pair of pants. The boots that I wear, every year, I do about one a year, they're, they're anywhere from a hundred and eighty to two hundred and fifty dollars per boot. All these flashlights I've bought with my clothing allowances, is about a two hundred dollar flashlight, my other flashlight's about two hundred dollars. So, so these are what we use for the clothing allowance. Now, during the negotiation, he's, we said, this is what fire has deemed critical pieces that the department will just replace if they become defective. And so we agreed, we said, well, this would be, what would be a similar item.
For the police?
For the police.
Okay.
So that, so that's it. And I can, I can forward you a copy of the language in the contract, so you can, you can read it, and you see what's, what's in there.
And so what is the clerk having, uh, of, an exception to this, then?
Well, he believes that even though it's listed out there, it's part of that clothing allowance, but it is...
And you don't think that's...
Uniform, it's uniform replacement. It's replace, it's items that the department has agreed to, and the language says, beyond, or, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, beyond the clothing allowance, these items, if they become defective, which is determined by, it's not just an officer getting up one day and say, this shirt is torn up, I need a new one. He's gotta go to his supervisor and say, hey, look, I've got a defective piece of this Class A uniform. We do inspections twice a year on the Class A uniform. Most guys only wear them for special occasions. I, I, I wear my uni, my Class A uniform about three times a year. I've had the same Class A uniform for ten years, the entire ten years that I've been here. I haven't gained any weight. I'm just kidding.
So this, so this, this extra amount would not be afforded to all of the policemen?
It'll be, yeah, I mean, any officer will be...
I thought you said it would only take...
Well, there's only five or six officers that wear it all the time, that would probably use it more often than other officers, you know?
The money, the money is, is there...
There's a, there's a six thousand dollar line item for uniforms.
All Buddy's doing is clarifying it, so Dan feels like the way he pays it would be right. Am I right?
Here, here's the issue I have with it. That six thousand dollars that was put in the budget, we were gonna hire three new police officers. We didn't hire the three new police officers, so they're using this money for other purposes. I have no problem. I think anybody that's ever had a damaged uniform, whatever, has been paid. I cannot recall anybody that's never been paid. I'm gonna catch twenty-two situation. The salary ordinance says I can only pay nine hundred dollars uniform allowance. Their own union attorney that wrote me a letter stated that I needed to reimburse this individual, so reimbursement, even this supports it more that, uh, that it is a reimbursement.
It does not, it does not. You're parsing words, and I've spoken to our union attorney.
I can read what this is like for me.
The reimbursement, I, I have a copy of it. You don't have to read it. We don't, we don't have to go down there.
But they said at the beginning, it was a company that was invoicing.
Yeah, it needs to be paid to the company that issued the invoice.
In that regard.
Well, if it's a, it's, if it's, if it's a, a company that's invoicing, that's not going to the individual, would...
Well, this letter states differently that I need to reimburse them. Alls I wanna do is be able to pay the bill, and I don't see what the big deal is to put in the salary ordinance nine hundred dollars a year and anything negotiated through union contracts.
So then where does that portion of salary, does it go on the check stub every time you replace something on somebody's uniform? Do you put like a hundred and eighty dollars on their check stub?
No, that gives me the right to go ahead and pay that bill.
But could I, I think in one thing with Dan is, is that once this money's been paid out, and someone was to come in and audit, and they look over here and they're seeing, uh, oh, wait a minute, why's this shirt being bought? Why is this shirt being bought when we, when they're already given a uniform? Well, he can also show them within the law, uh, that, well, it says right here that, what the union contract says. And the, you know, even though it is a contract backed up, it is one thing, if you wanted to meet, uh, the clerk halfway on this, it is one thing that could be questioned, uh, I would suppose, but that's, that's really where Dan's wanting that particular...
I have no issue how you guys pay for it. I think my concern is, and I, and I talked to our attorney, and I've talked to Craig about this, and the mayor, I mean, our concern is, I don't think that's gonna end up being right, that it's, it's not salary. It's talking about uniform replacement, so it's, it's not a, it's not part of the salary. If that's how you guys wanna pay it, be my guest, but we've talked, yeah, we've talked, we agree.
But in order to get by this and move on, I believe this is a possible fix.
And it was, it was the auditors, Nathan, whenever I was the clerk treasurer, we had all these things written in various different pieces and dis, and different parts of...
Right.
Ordinances, and they suggested that we pull all of this together into the salary ordinance, so that it was all in one spot, so that it was defined there like that in one spot, which I think is why it's in there these...
Well, I understand, but I mean, I'm, I'm asking you, like, so if you think, if an officer turns in for a defective holster that needs to be replaced, do you think that gets paid out of salary? I, do you think that's the appropriate line item?
No, I...
I mean, if that's how you guys do it, I'm fine. I don't, I don't, I don't care how you guys do it, I just, my confusion is, does that, that doesn't sound like, like salary to me.
Are you, uh...
If that's how you guys wanna pay it, though.
Your question's been answered over there, Chris, or...
Yeah, but the thing, it, just because it's called a salary ordinance, it doesn't necessarily define everything. It's a salary. An ordinance can define other things besides just salary. What it's called is just a name.
We just want it resolved. We don't have to, we don't have to keep fighting about it, which is fine. You know, I'm not talking about fighting with you, I'm just talking about, we don't need to let this stretch out any farther into the year, but I just wanted to make sure you kinda understood that...
I do.
How it got negotiated out, you know?
And you know, in the past, the, the council was criticized for settling a lot of these things behind closed doors and coming out in here and just voting, and the public never heard any of these arguments, or didn't know what was going on. So now we do it out here in open, and we talk these things out, nobody's arguing, nobody's really shouting or doing anything. I understand now, I'm on board, and I think the public is on board.
I thought I could slide it by you, but apparently it didn't work.
He was hassling us at Ponderosa last week about it, so...
We can put that in the salary ordinance, too. I'm good.
Okay.
So if you wanna add, and whatever the contract says to the salary ordinance, so that the clerk treasurer can pay it, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, I...
I forgot what you said.
How about, how about we understand and we'll figure the verbiage out? I'm just saying that we wanna add that, uh, that the clerk may pay those things, it could be added to this, that the, that the, those things that are in the contract shall also be paid as well.
Okay.
Second.
Is that your amendment, buddy?
Well, I, not, I'm just trying to pick up from Dan the way it is. Do you, something should be added to that, or...
General Ordinance Number Two is up for approval on second reading.
Right.
So do you wanna go ahead and amend it?
Yes, I do.
To read as what? General Ordinance Number Four. That's number four, then.
Yeah, it's number four, it is second reading, and, um, Dan, what would you say?
My thing would just be, uh, paid according to the uniform allowance and anything negotiated through the union contracts...
Okay.
Over and above whatever the uniform allowance says.
That's understood, then. Okay.
Okay.
And I believe that would be the amendment based on what Dan said.
That's the amendment, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Did you get that, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay. General Ordinance Number Four is up for approval on second reading only with the amendment. Need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve on second reading, General Ordinance Number Four.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on third and final reading at the next meeting.
Now, I've got a question. This has only been done on second reading tonight, so I'm taking it, I can go ahead and pay this bill tomorrow?
Well, it's not approved. The, the ordinance itself's not approved, but I don't know why you can't. I'm not the attorney, though.
And I agree, I wanna get it paid as quickly as possible.
You know what? When the auditors come, it will be a done rule, so...
Can we vote this on third reading?
The third, the third reading is, uh, next month, and then, and there's a thirty-day grace period after that.
Can we, can we go to the third reading tonight?
We were unanimous, uh, here, or would you rather not?
It doesn't matter to me, I mean, uh...
Dave?
I'm all for it.
I can't say we're unanimous, 'cause I don't know, Jim, I think you voted no, didn't you?
Yeah, but I'm still looking.
What's that?
I'm still looking.
Okay.
Why would it have to be unanimous if we did it on third reading?
I am, I am trying to figure out...
It has to be unanimous. If you wanna, if you wanna pass an ordinance on three readings in one meeting, the council has to be...
This is only two readings in one meeting.
Right, okay, this would be a third reading, so only two tonight, so we could do, we don't have to be...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be unanimous, I don't think.
It doesn't have to be unanimous.
Okay. That would be right.
Well, I'll take a vote, uh, to see who wants to hear it on third reading. We'll begin on my left.
I, I was fine with the ordinance before, and fine with the amendment, so yes.
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 Okay. Uh, General Ordinance Number Four, Two Thousand Eighteen is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. Uh, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to waive the rules and read by title only.
I'll make a motion to read by title only.
Second.
Start on my left, buddy.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
I'll ask, this time I'll ask the clerk to read into the record, General Ordinance Number Four, Two Thousand Eighteen, by title only.
General Ordinance Number Four, Twenty Eighteen is an ordinance that amends General Ordinance Number Eight, Twenty Seventeen, Salary Ordinance for Twenty Eighteen, which was passed by the common council during the budget presentations last fall.
This includes the amendment that, uh, we passed on second reading. A motion to approve, General Ordinance Number Four, Two Thousand Eighteen, on third and final reading.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, on third reading, General Ordinance Number Four.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Do you have an extra form, Dan?
Uh, yeah, I do, but it'll take me a minute. Let me grab it here. You can go ahead and I'll pass it on, Dan. You got one?
While you're signing the, uh, uh, General Ordinance Number Four for third reading, under unfinished business, greenscape commission appointment. Uh, there was one person who has come forward interested in serving. Her name is Amanda Rubidoo. She lives on North 15th Avenue. She couldn't be here this evening, but she is interested in serving on the Greenscape Commission.
Have you talked to her, Mayor?
Yeah. Her and her husband generally attend meetings, but they couldn't come tonight. But that's, uh, that's a council objective. I, I can only bring the information forward.
Does anybody have any comments on it?
I can invite her to the next meeting, uh, and you guys can talk with her.
It, it's, I think it'd be a good idea, especially we have two counselors missing tonight, so.
I'll invite her to come back in May.
Okay, that'd be good. And they've only got one missing, right?
Yeah, they're, uh, they have four members, so they're good. That concludes unfinished business. Uh, under new business, we have five items. Resolution Number Two, 2018, is a resolution that calls for the continuation of the Interlocal Association. This is a, uh, Interlocal Association started in August of 1973, and it was five cities, the city of Shelbyville, the city of Greenfield, the city of Franklin, the city of Greenwood, the city of Beech Grove, and they agreed, uh, that every five years, they, uh, seek to renew the agreement. And the mayors of each of those cities serve on this association. Uh, we are region, there's five or nine work regions in the state of Indiana. We are region five. And the core of this group, what we do is we approve claims for, uh, retraining, job retraining, relocation, and, uh, at-risk students in high school, and, uh, those who decide to go to technical school. So, um, this was started under Mayor Gishwala, and it's continued to today, and it's up for a simple resolution to continue for the next five years. We met again today, and we meet quarterly, and, uh, uh, this is a really, really good program. And I recommend that you approve this for continuation. I'll open the floor up for any questions or comments. If not, I'll ask the clerk to read the Resolution Number Two, uh, 2018 into the record, please.
Resolution Number Two, 2018, is a resolution that approves the continuation of the city of Beech Grove's participation with the Interlocal Association for the next five years, whereas it is desirable, advantageous, and in the public interest to enter into an agreement for the joint cooperative action as described in the Joint Resolution and Articles of Agreement of the Interlocal Association and as authorized by the Interlocal Cooperation Act of Indiana, and whereas Section Two of the Joint Resolution and Article of Agreement state that the agreement shall be renewed for five-year periods. Therefore, the city council, the city of Beech Grove, Indiana hereby resolve to join with other local units of government, city of Franklin, city of Greenwood, city of Greenfield, and the city of Shelbyville in the continuation of the Interlocal Association as described in the Joint Resolution and Articles of Agreement. Now, therefore, the set of elected officials and witness whereof cause this agreement to be executed and herein affix their signatures the second day of April 2018.
Any comments or questions? I have included, uh, our last board meeting minutes with this, just for your information. So, uh, if there's not any questions or comments, I'll ask for motion to approve Resolution Number Two, 2018.
Thank you both for approving Resolution Number Two.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. General Ordinance Number Five, 2018, is up for introduction and approval on first reading only this evening. And council, what this is, is effective this year when someone, a private contractor calls in a dig ticket. We have to locate any sanitary sewer or stormwater, a drain, or piping in that area of the construction. So we, as a city, have to do it. So, uh, we've never had to do that before, and this is a directive that comes from the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. So what we, what the board did earlier this year is we entered into an agreement with SAMCO to provide locate services for us whenever a dig ticket is issued for construction. Uh, on the back page, well, the second to the last page is the, uh, city of Beech Grove past 12-month ticket count. This is from eight-one-one. Uh, in 2016, we had, uh, 1,374 locates issued in Beech Grove. Last year, 2017, we had 2,369. So, uh, what happens is now we have to account, whenever a dig ticket is issued, we have to account for the sanitary and the stormwater utilities located where they're doing construction work. And for each locate, it costs the city about now about $10. So this ordinance, what we're asking that the council consider is that when a person comes in for a permit and it calls for a locate, that they pay the $10 fee onto the permit to cover our expense. So we are not, we're not making, we're, we just want to break even. And we, we don't, it's not so much to make money as to keep us from losing money. And at this rate, we will lose between $20,000 and $30,000 this year if we don't put legislation into place. Is that accurate, Dan? So, uh, all we're doing is we're asking that, uh, the utility locate fee, notice ticket fee shall be assessed for each permit that is issued by the city of Beech Grove for construction activity requiring a eight-one-one notification for utility locates. The notice ticket fee charged as part of each permit shall equal what is charged to the city of Beech Grove for utility locate service. And that's what we're asking on first reading this evening. And, uh, that way the council doesn't have to revisit this, because we have to revisit the utility locate, uh, contract at the beginning of next year. So with this, the way this is worded, it just automatically picks up what is going on. So that's what this ordinance is about. Uh, any questions or comments? I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number Five, 2018, into the record on first reading, please.
General Ordinance Number Five, 2018, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove concerning utility locate fees, whereas contractors have to call in, locate state eight-one-one prior to construction work, and whereas up until now, the city has had no jurisdiction having utilities located for any type of private construction projects that are occurring in the city, and whereas the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission has recently begun to find municipalities for not locating both sanitary and storm sewer lines prior to construction activities, and whereas recently the Board of Public Works and Safety has entered into an agreement with SAMCO to provide utility locates when eight-one-one service receives a request for utility locates, and whereas the city bears an unfunded burden for the payment of utility locates and should attempt to seek reimbursement for this expense from contractors. Now, therefore, be affirmed that the count, common council desires to amend Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove to include utility locate fees. Now, therefore, be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following section be included in Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. Add the following, 150.84 utility locate fees. A, a notice ticket fee shall be assessed for each permit that is issued by the city of Beech Grove for construction activity requiring a eight-one-one notification for utility locates. The notice ticket fee charged as part of each permit shall equal what is charged to the city of Beech Grove for utility locate services. Now, therefore, be affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. Now, therefore, be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances and no other chapter. Now, therefore, be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve a General Ordinance Number Five, 2018, on first reading only.
Thank you both for approving General Ordinance Number Five.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading at the May meeting. Thank you. May 7th meeting. General Ordinance Number Six, 2018, is up for approval on first reading only, and there were some questions concerning the charge for mattress and box springs, and I would like to go ahead and, um, talk about this before it's introduced and we have to amend it. So we talked before the meeting about, uh, the charge, and I just want to make sure that, that the city is protected. We currently charge, the, the ordinance says minimum charge of $20. It doesn't talk about a service charge. Is that right, Dan? Service fee?
Yes, right now, currently, we're paying Ray's a service fee per month.
On top of?
On top of how many mattresses. And now it's deducted from that amount. If we do 10 mattresses at $20, 200 comes off of that fee.
So I just want to make sure that the city is protected, and we, we picked up 354 mattresses and box springs last year. And, uh, to not charge, uh, puts the city in a, in a deficit position. And I, while we're talking about this, I want to make it clear, on your sewer bill, the trash fee that we, the $15 trash fee, that is for your basic weekly trash pickup. That's not for heavy trash or anything else that is done. So anything on top of that, we, it, we take a hit as a city. And what we're trying, what we want to make sure here on this one especially, is that we break even.
Well, is this, is this $20 charge, um, to whoever sets the mattress and box spring out, that's over and above that $15, right? Well, if, if the figures that you just quoted, if we picked up, or if we picked up 354 last year, and we charged 20 bucks each, that's $7,080. And at the $250 a month that Dan's talking about, and then the amount's taken off if we get enough, $250 a month for 12 months is only $3,000. So I don't think we're losing on it.
Well, just, I just want to make sure that our base, our bases are covered on this. I don't know what the language should be, and the way I wrote it was that it, the minimum charge should be equal to what is charged to the city of Beech Grove.
Well, if that were the case, we'd have to lower what we got, $7,800 down some by what your language is saying. You know what I'm saying?
Minimum, yeah.
So I don't know what, uh, what, how it should read.
We have 354 mattresses left.
This year now, you know, this year we can only have 250. You don't know.
I don't know how to, how to make it read, but right now we're covered, it seems, if they stay in that range.
Well, what we can do is take that part out, and I could come back to it later on if this, something else comes up.
Yeah, I mean.
We haven't, uh, we haven't started the ordinance yet, so we can scratch it.
And then if you guys see that it's pretty, it's starting to not cover our cost, then certainly we'd, we'd want to raise it up. But right now, it looks like it is.
You see where it says amend the following? If you take that out all the way down to the first, uh, byline there, now therefore be it affirmed, we'll take that out. So the only part of this ordinance that we'll hear is the first part, where it says delete the following in its entirety. Section 96.163, disposing of refuse within the business district. That is a old, old, uh, uh, chapter in the Code of Ordinances that has been around since the mid-sixties, and it doesn't, doesn't even apply anymore, so it should come out.
And so, and the, and the amend the following will be scratched entirely?
Uh, entirely. And I'll provide you a new copy for the next meeting.
Okay. Do you want to do that first reading then on this tonight?
I, I've got one question. Uh, since we're doing, like you said, like 350 this time, is there a possibility we could go to Ray's and say, hey, just do away with the service charge and we'll pay you this much, uh, you know, what we've been paying them, because they're still coming out all right. I understand what they're trying to do. They don't want to come into Beech Grove for one mattress. So I, I don't know when the high amounts are, when the lower amounts are. Brad would have to let us know on that, but, uh, my thing would be is, uh, the minimum service charge charged by Ray's.
Yes, anything's possible. Yeah, I just want to clean it up. So, and when, when we first introduced this ordinance, it just, I think we missed it as far as what gets charged, and we just don't want the city to be short-changed. We want to come out even on this. So, uh, General Ordinance Number Six, 2018, is up for approval on first reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please. And take the amend, amend the following out, Dan.
Okay. Uh, General Ordinance Number Six, 2018, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove concerning the disposal of waste within the business district and the fees assessed for mattress and box spring pickup. Whereas the city discourages any type of open burning for trash disposal, especially within a business district, and whereas a specific section that is referenced below, 96.16, was introduced in 1967 and is outdated and recommended to be deleted, and whereas when the common council approved the fee for mattress and box spring disposal, the amount approved was less than the amount being charged, and whereas this ordinance will help update Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. That's as far as you want to go on this?
Yeah, just read the, delete the following.
Okay, delete the following in its entirety. Section 96.163, disposing of refuse within, within the business district.
Then now therefore?
Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 96 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Beech Grove and no other ordinance. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve General Ordinance Number Six, 2018, on first reading only.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on, uh, second reading at the May council meeting, and I'll provide you in your packet a new ordinance. Thank you, council. General Ordinance Number Seven, 2018, is up for approval this evening on first reading only. And what this is, council, is, uh, the Holy Name Parish has approached the city. Uh, they own a lot across the street on, from the church on 16th Street. Uh, it's a vacant lot. They own the lot. They tore the house down. It's been like that for a long time. And what they want to do is they want to, uh, build a community park, uh, which would be shared by the parish and, and by the people who live in that neighborhood. by the parish and, and by the people who live in that neighborhood. So they approached the city for a couple of reasons, but the main reason is they want to see if the council will give them permission to prohibit parking in front of that space. That parcel is 75 North 16th, and they would like to prohibit parking in that space right there. So that's why they came to the city. And before we, we hear it on first reading, I, I told them when we met with them, I met with them with Tom Hannan, and I said, you know, I said, we'll check, we'll call downtown and check for zoning on this to make sure you can do it before we get started, so there's nothing for a last minute deal. So we called downtown and, and they said that if, if they do it and it's community, it's a community shared park, it's permitted. If it's not community shared and it's strictly for the parish, then it's prohibited. They have to get a variance. So that's, they have to understand that. So their intent is to build a playground and share it with the neighborhood there, and they're asking the council to approve no parking in front of that parcel. So general ordinance number seven, 2018 calls for that, and at this time, I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record.
General ordinance number seven, 2018 is an ordinance that amends chapter 78 of the code of ordinances for the city of Beach Grove concerning parking on a public street. Whereas Holy Name Parish has purchased a partial of land at 75 North 16th Avenue, and whereas the property is a lot only and has access from the alley in the street, and whereas Holy Name Parish would like to construct a community playground shared by both the parish and the local neighborhood, and has approached the city for guidance on this matter concerning the types of installations of equipment. And whereas Holy Name Parish has asked the parking be prohibited in front of 75 North 16th Avenue so children at the parish and in the neighborhood can access the playground. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend chapter 78 of the code of ordinances for the city of Beach Grove concerning parking on a public street. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following amendment be added to chapter 78 of the code of ordinances. Add the following to chapter 78, schedule one, parking prohibited at all times. Street, North 16th Avenue, between 40 foot in front of 75 North 16th. The side is the east side of the street. Ordinance number seven, 2018. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend chapter 78 of the code of ordinances for the city of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to chapter 78 and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Any further questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve general ordinance number seven, 2018 on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose the same sign. We will hear this on second reading at the May meeting. Thank you, council. The last order of business is a BZA resignation, and Dan, do you have her letter?
Yes, I do.
Could you read it into the record?
Yeah. Dear Mayor Buckley, I regret, I regret that I must resign my position on the Beach Grove Board of Zoning Appeals, effective immediately. Unfortunately, I have been experiencing health issues that I must make a priority in my life at this time. I would like to thank you for your confidence in my ability to serve the city of Beach Grove as a BZA member over the last six years. Respectfully submitted, Diana Hendricks.
Thank you, Diana. I'll ask for a motion to accept her letter.
Make both will accept her letter.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same sign. I appreciate Diana serving, and she is a council appointment, so I'll defer to the council president pro tem for guidance on this, but.
Well, once again, we'll need to come up with names, and I'll leave it at that. Let's see if I also have anything to bring up or suggest tonight.
I'd just like to make a little comment on this because I do attend their meetings. That board has a hard time getting enough people all the time, and Diana was one of the faithful ones that was always there. They do a lot of important things, not that the other committees don't, but as quickly as you could act on this to get them a fifth member, I think would be very helpful.
They're running the same problems where they have their five-member board, they need three votes to pass something. So if it's 2-2, or you know, 2-1, it fails. So it's, it's helpful to have that fifth member. And like Dan said, there's, for whatever reason, it's hard to get, it's rarely do we get five people there.
Well, it's in the middle of the day on a Wednesday, so that hurts right there.
I'll inform the other two councillors if they're not here, and then it might be a good thing to share anything maybe ahead of time if anyone comes up with any names. And it's, and it's one of those positions that, you know, requires somebody that really wants to kind of go in the area of BZA. That's, that's not always the, an easy area for everyone, so.
All right, thank you, buddy. That concludes new business this evening. Council comments?
Yeah, I just appreciate bringing up some of our school athletes, giving them an opportunity to, for us to meet them if we didn't know who they were. And also, I think it might be something that they'll remember as well as their family. And Ethan Smiley not being here is, is one that I know, and, but they're just, you know, a lot of good kids, and I wanted to go with that. Liz Lampy asked me to share kind of the, the Beach Grove, I'd say the walkout where the, that you and I think the chief attended, I don't know if that's the right word for it, but she said that she was very proud of the, the high school kids, and she just wanted me to express that, and knowing that she wasn't here, I said I would do that. I also wanted to thank everyone that come up here and spoke with Jim Kaufman, passed on some things with the business community, appreciate that. On a, on another hand, with Dan McMillan, who I said, and not in green with the particular area where this should be at, and I still stand on that, but I do want to say that his whole reasoning and talking to him is sometimes the most stubbornest thing you could ever want to, ever reach, but I sincerely believe that his goal is to make sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and maybe to pick on somebody along the way. But truthfully, I'm, I say that in jest, that that is important, and I appreciate your steadfast, and I know that Mr. Rinks does as well. I did have one thing to follow of, I cannot understand, the police chief's not supposed to do anything, Mark. How can you ever have anything go bad on you? That's what I didn't understand. You're not doing very well if you're, you got equipment being worn or anything. And with that, that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
I'd like to just thank everybody that comes on the meeting, everybody's input.
Ditto. Same for me. Real quick, didn't we put in our budget some amount for maybe new audio equipment up here?
Yes, in fact, I had talked to Tim Showalter and Lynn Reckaway. We got a quote where we can actually go live meetings, and it's about $2,500, I want to say, in different equipment than what we have right now. And I was going to move forward on it, but I had forgot about it. I just wanted to bring it to the council's attention.
How does that work, councillor, given that it's the council's budget? Do we just approve it as a, as a group, or how do we do that, or just our treasurer just go ahead and do it?
It's already appropriation, right?
Yes, and it's actually for city council, not necessarily this group as a whole, but the city council.
We're stalled on that, Chris, because it's, the quotes are over 10,000, so we have to wait.
We'll get the best price that way, though.
Not necessarily.
No, other than that, that's, whenever you get ready to move on that, let me know, because I'd be interested. Then I really don't have any other comments, other than maybe to Buddy. You know, many a truth is said in jest, you know.
Were you going somewhere, sir?
Talking about you and Dan.
Oh, okay.
I don't have any other comments.
I just want to thank everybody for coming.
Couple announcements. Free shredding and appliance drop-off is this Saturday behind City Hall from nine to noon. April is cleanup Beach Grove month, so we encourage everyone to pick up around their home and out in front of their house on the street. Street sweeping started today. Beach Grove High School's Community Service Day is this Wednesday from eight in the morning until noon. And then I would like to call council workshop for two weeks from tonight at 7:00. It's not a mandatory meeting. It's not even a meeting, it's, it's just a workshop. We're not going to be taking any votes on anything. I'll advertise it publicly. The public is welcome to attend. I just want to go over the, the agenda for this summer and some of the things that you're going to be hearing, ordinance-wise, resolution-wise, and several of you have asked to hear from Phil concerning the condition of our sewer system. So I asked Phil today if he would come and talk, and he will. So it's two weeks from tonight, the 16th of April at 7:00 PM. And again, it's just a council workshop, and then we'll go through some legislation that we'll introduce this summer. One of those pieces of legislation is a new rental code ordinance that I'll introduce to you. So that's April the 16th at 7:00 PM in these chambers. It's not a meeting, you're not required to attend. It's just, we're going to provide you information of what's coming up this, this summer. With that, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned. I'm, Dan, I don't know what time it is.
8:21.
8:20.
All right. Thank you very much, council.
Hey, Chris.